Meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District at seven oh one and can we get members present?
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Manufu Lia Inga Anawai.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here. And we'll ask Mr. Valenti to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take a moment to review the meeting guidelines, board meeting guidelines. Alright. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor?
She got it in.
Now you can finish your sentence.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a special presentation recognizing retiring board member Joseph O'Tide.
So as is our, our custom, um, we take a portion of a meeting, um, when a board me- member resigns or retires, um, to recognize them for their years of service and so this is our opportunity to recognize Mr. Joseph O'Tide.
Alright, so Mr. Joseph O'Tide in recognition of your service as a trustee of the governing board of the Jefferson Elementary School District two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fifteen. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I am honored. Um, as, as you guys know, um, this means a lot to me, so I want to thank you all. Um, I'm just gonna go down the list. Rebecca, Manufu, Shaquille, Marie, Brent, Bernie, Julie, Sandy, Maria, um, Melinda. Always here. But if, if anything, this, this belongs to all of us. Um, it- And, and the reason being is that we are here for, for the kids. How can we go, how can we between an immovable object and an irresistible force, bring out the best for our kids and the resources for our kids? It's tough. Um, unless you've been on the board or involved in community service, getting things done for our school district, it's hard to understand. But as you know, diminishing re- revenue and more resources for our kids is what we're trying to do and it's a tough job. Um, all I can say is God bless to all of us to make sure that we provide the right resources and guidance for the leaders of our future and hopefully they can stand in the seats that we stand in today. So then they could take it on to the next generation. All in all, I want to thank everybody for their time and I plan to be active in the community, though not sitting in my favorite seat where the plug is. Um, I will continue to be active most likely for the rest of my life. So is there, if there's anything that you guys need, you guys have my phone number and my email and it's easy to find, o'tide@gmail.com for the public. Um, and thank you again and God bless our school district and God bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Steps out. And communications persons wishing to address the board. At this moment we have. Alright, first we will have Sean Noonan, parent.
Hello, my name is Sean Noonan and I am a parent of first and third grade students at Tobias Elementary. I'm here tonight to first say thank you to the district and the principal Tobias and especially the board for working hard in filling the third grade permanent teaching position at Tobias. I really do appreciate seeing and speaking to board members outside of this forum because I felt like I was heard. My concerns were important and that someone cared about my son and his class. I understand that there were many obstacles in filling the position, but everyone here must understand also that if you want your students to become successful entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs, scientists, math geniuses, that first they must be offered a comprehensive and rigorous curriculum on the first day of school taught by a permanent classroom teacher and that was the initial problem. Before anyone thinks they deserve a pat on the back, I would like to remind everyone that this was a systemic failure, meaning that this was not the failure of one but many. Also, my son has gone thirteen school days without a permanent teacher. I sincerely hope that everyone walks away with a lesson learned. Just as teachers constantly reflect on their teaching practice, I would like all of us to do the same. One of my biggest concerns is communication. There should have been more updates and immediate notices from administration about the absence of a teacher at the start of the year, the process of hiring and even the announcement of the hiring to the people directly impacted, the families of room ten at Tobias. Just offering that sign of respect would have calmed many nerves and answered many questions. But I'd like to reassure the district that through all of this, I have a very positive outlook and there are many things going well in the district and at Tobias. More importantly, I will continue to be involved in all the happenings at Tobias. I have high expectations of this district and frankly, everyone should. I will expect a transparent administration that acts responsibly for the benefit of its teachers and students. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Melinda Dart, AFT.
Thank you. Good evening, Melinda Dart, AFT. I'd like to thank Mr. O'Tide for his service on the board. And I'd also like to remind everyone and the public out there, um, that we have a candidate forum next Wednesday night here in this room, September sixteenth, six thirty, um, for the candidates for the open, uh, two-year seat. And it's hosted by AFT three-two-six-seven and the League of Women Voters. So we hope to see the community come out and, uh, get informed about that election which is coming up November second. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Renato Belchan, parent.
Hi, good evening, board.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight just to talk about one of the agendas that you have on your, um, review, which is the YFE approval of the co- two contracts. Personally, I have my son who is a seventh grader at Ben Franklin that is attending this after-school program. So I just encourage you to, um, hopefully just rat- ratify this contract. My understanding is that through the project process last year that it was already approved and I understand that it was just contractual language that had to, uh, be clarified. Uh, the YFE program is very important at Ben Franklin and my, this is my son's second year. He, uh, we, uh, actually stumbled into it last year and I'm very thankful that we're able to, uh, not only be in it, but my son has grown since then and the importance of this program at YFE, uh, is, uh, you can't measure it, but what I can measure is that through my son and through the people that have gone through the program at least last year, I can see a big changes in the sixty, I think last year sixty. Now I, I believe there's eighty, so I just want to encourage the board to, uh, just reconfirm the contract extension for this year and, uh, thank you.
Alright, thank you. More cards, administrator comments.
Yes, I would like to say that, um, I was able to attend the back-to-school night at Daniel Webster last week, my alma mater. Um, and our new principal, Jennifer Knopf, which means button in German, um, did a wonderful job, um, welcoming all the, uh, the new parents and it was a full room and a lot of, lot of kids as well and it was really nice to see a cafeteria just full of parents and, uh, people excited to be there. I'm very happy about that. And I'd also like to thank Mr. O'Tide for his years of service on, on the board and I also want to remind all the parents and kids to, um, sign up for the free, uh, send in their free and reduced applications so they can participate in the free drawing for Disneyland tickets, Great America tickets, um, Cold Stone Ice Cream and a lot of other prizes. And we, whether you will be approved or not, uh, you will be entered into the drawing. So that's it. Thank you.
So I also attended back-to-school night. I joined MP Brown and with Dr. Douglas and, um, great turnout. It was, uh, packed M U R. Um, and then also I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. O'Tide for his service. And then, um, one bit of news today, I'm not sure if you heard, but the state assessment results for district and school were released today. Um, and so we'll be presenting that. But just want to remind folks that this is a baseline year. This is the first time we've been taking this test, um, and it's a different test. And so when you're looking at scores, consider that, that this is where we start and then we move forward. We can't compare it to the previous test. But I'll share all of that at the next board meeting.
So I went to FDR for back-to-school night. It was great to be there. I spent my last few days there planning with Mr. Turner as he transitioned over to TRP and it was a PTA meeting and the staff was there and Ms. Locata, a lot of excitement, you know, and I know that, how it is transitioning in new schools. So it was great to see them, the, the program, the families going into classes. Um, also I'd like to share, we have a couple of exciting things going on. Our after-school sports program starting to kick in in October with boys volleyball. Uh, this will be going out at FDR for their sixth and seventh grade kids as well as TRP Fernando and Ben and they'll be doing their sixth through eighth. And we'll be again like in the old days, uh, playing each other. And so we have a gentleman, Mr. Nick Wolf, who's doing a great job organizing that with all the different folks at the different schools. Girls volleyball is gonna kick in in January and then we have track, uh, track and field event in the spring over at Westmore High. In conjunction with that, uh, we have our elementary school PE teachers who have been working with, uh, our PE aides and kind of working on their program and building on the strength that we already have in that capacity. So they've been going, serving all the different elementary schools. So we're gonna have them come out soon and do a little presentation after things get settled, so.
Sounds great. Just a clarification. So when you say they're gonna play against each other, the middle schools will be playing against other middle schools?
Yes. So as part of the LCAP planning last year was, uh, put in and so we have the transportation's built in and so they're gonna go play at the different, uh, schools. So, and then there's gonna be, uh-
Is it just within our district?
Just within our district. Yeah.
Alright.
Sure.
Just, they used to do that. It was nice and then they stopped.
Way back in the dark ages.
No, wait a minute. No, no, but it was nice. Cause the students looked forward to it, you know, so. But then at one time they used to all wear green. All their outfits were green. Every school, even, even Westmore. I'm going, how can you tell who's who? But they've changed now.
And Mr. Vidalas.
Yes, um, so I too attended back-to-school night. I was at George Washington. Um, one of the activities we undertook at all the back-to-school nights, um, administrators as well as teachers, um, tried to increase voter registration. Um, I, I was feeling particularly down because I got three voter registrations, but then later I found out that others had none. So I felt very successful after, after that. But, um, it is something I think we have to continually remind our families, um, of the opportunity to register to vote. Um, and I have lots of voter registration forms. Um, if you're gonna be at any event or something and you would like to take some, um, please come and see me. Um, and, uh, you can make up your own little table and, and ask everyone who walks by if they've registered to vote yet. So, um, it's particularly important this round because of the mail-in ballot and we want to make sure that everyone gets a ballot um, in their mailbox that is registered or an opportunity, even if they've moved, that they get it, so. Um, I too want to thank Mr. O'Tide for his years of service. Um, your dedication and your direction that you provided was very helpful and we appreciate that and we wish you well in your next endeavors. Back-to-school night in the middle school is next week, so we will, we will continue our voter registration opportunities. Some of the same parents will see us again, so maybe the second time works. I thi- I've heard once you have to ask someone five times before they say yes. So anyway, so we just want, want to make sure we, that's for phone banking. It's for almost everything. We want to make sure that, uh, you know, the importance of being registered to vote, um, is communicated. And, and wonderful thing is that many of our parents have said, yes, I'm already registered, you know, thank you. So that, that was the more common response that we got.
Great. Board member acknowledgements and commendations.
I don't have a whole lot to add since, um, Ms. McCulley already said where I was. Uh, I, I do want to note that I saw also at, um, MP Brown that the library was there signing people up for library cards and September is get a library card month or something along those lines. And so good time for everybody as you're sta- heart, starting back to school to get the kids the library cards. Any kid old enough to write their own name can have a card in their own name, which often makes them feel very excited to check out books and read books. So head on into the libraries, get those library cards. It's free.
Good evening. It feels good to be back. Unfortunately, I was ill our last meeting and I'm remarkably rarely ill, um, most of the year. So it feels really good to, to be, um, here and hearing a lot of the updates, um, as we kick off our school year. I too would like to commend, uh, Mr. O'Tide for his service, uh, with the school district. Um, being a public servant, as you well know, many times is a thankless job. So we thank you for your service here and your dedication to our students. I, I also want to say I'm excited to see, um, the after-school programs, sport, sports program come back. It's such an important part of, uh, the curriculum and I think that the kids have missed it. So it's, it's gonna be exciting to see that incorporated back into, um, our, our schools, our school district. I did want to mention the parent has already left, um, that came from M H T. But I, I do want to comment, uh, I appreciate, I very much appreciate him sharing, um, his experience at M H T. I think it's very important that, um, that we're reminded of the importance of transparency and accountability and open co- communication, cause that's definitely what we try to do here. Um, and I believe in that. I've seen it with my colleagues here and I've seen it in the administration. I, and I know he's already left, but I do want to thank him. I think it's important. Many times when our parents, even our students are frustrated, they do not use our meetings as a vehicle to communicate their concerns. And it's very important, cause many times when you're sitting at home, you're not able to do it or after the experience has transpired, you just kind of let it go and you don't remember that we're here to provide that, that communication and that dialogue. In order for us to do our job and do it better, we need to know what your concerns are. So I'm very, very thankful to hear his concerns today and just really excited to be back.
Okay. Well, I'd like to congratulate Mr. O'Tide as well. I'm sitting next to me here. I saw you plugging in all the time. But, um, you, you did have a insight for, um, financial stuff, which was really great. So thank you for what you brought to the table and for the time that you served. We appreciate that. And we'll be seeing you someplace, I'm sure, from here to there. Okay, so, um, what I did want to mention that I did attend a planning commission meeting. I think I might have mentioned to some of you. I know I talked to, um, Mr. Vidalas about it, that they're, I'm gonna be having this construction for all these, uh, big garbage trucks. They're gonna be, uh, putting some natural gas into them and it just the way it was looked, when I saw it, it kinda looked like it's too close to MP, um, Brown School where the kids walk. So I wanted to make sure that we could talk about it. It was, I went there and talked to them. But it, it turned out that what they had told me in the office is nothing how the wonderful presentation was. So it really was good and they, they do have some safeguards. And I did speak to, um, the fellow with the, um, a garbage company and he assured me that he would be sure that if we gave him a list of the times that our children walk by, they'll be extra aware of that. So, and it, it, the way the plan they showed me was it could go out this way, but it's not. It's gonna go out the way I think it should go out. So that, I was relieved in that. So instead of kinda complaining about that, I was complimenting them on it. It was turning out the way we would like to have it. Safety for our children. So that was really important. And that's why sometimes it pays that we go out to other places once in a while to advocate for our children. Otherwise, we don't find out until after the fact. That's why I try to get involved when I can. And about the ballots, um, I know that we are, wanna si- have as many people sign up to vote, which is important, but the, the next phase really, or the important phase is we have so many people already registered to vote that don't vote. Those are the ones we gotta tap into. And they're, they don't vote for various reasons. Who knows why? But now that it's gonna be all mail-in ballot, they say it's supposed to be better. I hope it is. Hope people don't put it aside and forget to mail it. But it also, that day of the election, they can go into the place, the so-called universal, uh, voting places and you can register right then and there and still vote. So I think we, somehow we need to put together, you know, little tidbits on a piece of paper that to tell parents, this is what you can do at different times. What, doesn't matter when you do it, but important that you do it so that they have, um, ample information of how they can become a voter or how they can be a real voter by voting. And how important it is for all of us, without telling them how to vote, of course. But hinting, no, just kidding.
Just to clarify, cause I know you didn't mean what it sounded like you said. They can't go and register on the day of the election at that.
Yes, you can.
If you are not already a registered voter.
You can. I was really amazed. Like, I had asked that question two or three times. Are you sure? Yes. Everything's gonna be electronic, so they're gonna be able to put in, to find out, you know, like-
So the thirty, or whatever it is, uh, advance, two-week you-
No.
Advance is going to be?
No.
Okay, well, that's cool.
That's, that's, I mean, it's not gonna be, I just hope that this plan that they have is totally gonna work. You know, because it's a lot of new things. But I think we need to, most important is to get the word out. They should register. If they're already registered, they need to vote.
Right.
If we can do that, then maybe this election will be very successful. So, and then I did, I wasn't able to go to all, any of the, um, back-to-school nights, but I did go back to school the day after to visit one of the schools. And, um, and as we, as I mentioned once before, uh, Garden Village School is partnering with Broadmoor Property Owners as they did last year for an event. And so I think that's a message that we can probably take out to our other schools through, either through PTA or however they want to do it, is partner with some group that's gonna help your school. And there are groups out there. I think, is it, um, Wichita Wilson School, don't they partner with the church over there? That's really a marvelous event that they put together. So whatever group it is that you're going to, you know, reach out to say, you know, we need help, it's gonna make the school successful. So, other than that, um, I'm probably forgetting something else, but we'll go on.
Well, if I could, speaking of forgetting things, I did also want to thank Mr. O'Tide for his service to the board. I got distracted by the library, but thank you, Mr. O'Tide.
Oh, and, and the library, I just want to tell you, I got some notice from, cause I belong to the same group you do, with the library that they're gonna be doing some more, um, outreach with our school district. And that's gonna be a real wonderful thing, that we're gonna be able to, to really get our children in, you know. So that's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
I almost forgot that, yeah.
So I'd like to once again congratulate and commend Mr. O'Tide for your years of service. Uh, we started together and we had a lot of meetings outside of this room as well. So I know your, uh, commitment and your passion that you have for bettering things for our youth here. I also like to commend Melinda Dart, even though we have it in another, uh, menu item later. Uh, but I did attend the, um, Cope banquet and that was, it was, I've been there at least four times and I think that was the best one that I have been to. Also, I'd like to commend Senator Jerry Hill and other state legislators that, um, passed a bill to, um, help us with the reserve cap that was put on the schools and school districts. And, you know, I'm just gonna quote from the CSBA article about it. It says, "Simply put, our local schools must not be discouraged from saving for a rainy day to protect our kids from future economic downturns." And I think that's important because in San Francisco, they actually have a rainy day fund that they can dip into. Uh, the school district dips into the city's fund and we don't have something like that here. So I wanted to commend them as well. And last but not least, the PE teachers at Polisita Middle School, because my son comes home from school every day really tired. He has PE last period, so that takes something off of my plate. I don't have to make him exercise before doing homework. So I'm really glad though, just to hear about all the developments we have right now in physical education because it's just as important as the other academic subjects. And I don't think I missed anyone.
Wait, you can't always say it at the end, right?
Alright, so do we have any correspondence?
Um, none. No additional comments.
Alright, and no comments. Alright, great. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Alright, this is a roll call. Vote.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Ms. Lia Inga Anawai?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye. Board Development two thousand and fifteen sixteen. The board will review training opportunities offered through the California School Boards Association and discuss whether any board members would like to attend. Updated course offerings will be available that later this fall. Board members shall report to the board orally or in writing as soon as possible on the in-service activities they attend as per Board, uh, BB ninety-two forty, Board Development.
Yeah, there was a request at, uh, previous meeting to provide the board with information on upcoming boards trainings. Um, I did call a CSBA and they are working on their, um, updated, um, annual offerings. It usually comes out in the fall and there are a couple, they've had some scheduling conflicts, so, um, they're delayed in that. But some of the same titles that are listed, um, in your, in your backup will be offered again, um, throughout the spring. Um, I did speak to Ms. Luan Rivera and during that conversation, I tried to peg her down on a date to do our annual board governance session. Um, she has available March nineteenth and I tried to get, look at any other Saturdays and she's full all the way to March nineteenth. So, but which is a good time.
I'm not sure I can make that.
I know, it's around someone's birthday.
Yes.
So, um, I, so I just want you guys to check your calendars. Get back to me.
Is that the only date she has?
Yeah, but I can probably ask if there's another consultant that can show, that can do it. She's very busy, cause she does those masters and governance sessions as well. So that takes up a lot of her time. So if, if you cannot make that, and I'm guessing not, um, I will speak to her and see if there's another, um, CSBA representative that can do another date.
I can probably check and call you back.
Yeah, why don't you do that, yeah.
Alright, thanks. Item E, resolution commending Melinda Dart, language arts coach and president of AFT thirty-two-six-seven. The administration recommends adoption of a resolution commending Melinda Dart, language arts coach and president of AFT thirty-two-six-seven for her dedication and support of public education and as a recent recipient of Samatelle Labor Council's Unity Award. Did you wanna say anything?
Um, yeah, I have no additional comments. I think, um, I think, um, the resolution speaks for itself, for Ms. Dart's contributions, um, not just to our district, but to the community at large, and, um, on behalf of teachers and students working, um, behind the scenes and sometimes on the stage to promote initiatives that support schools. So we thank her for that.
All right.
Can we all say, or do you want to read?
Yeah, we can all read a couple of lines, maybe.
Oh, so...
We can start from the beginning.
Oh, okay. I'll be first. Okay, whereas Jefferson Elementary School District wishes to acknowledge Melinda Dart for her dedication and support of public education. And whereas Melinda Dart started as a preschool teacher at the Chinatown Children's Center in San Francisco, and later beginning her successful career as an educator in the Jefferson Elementary School District, beginning in nineteen eighty-seven. And? But he needs to borrow the... Sorry, there you go. I didn't know what you were...
And whereas Melinda taught at Woodrow Wilson Elementary School for twenty-two years during her tenure in the Jefferson Elementary School District, and whereas Melinda became a teacher leader and is currently an instructional coach, supporting a number of teachers to improve their instructional practice.
And whereas Melinda has dutifully served as the president of Ameri-, of American Federation of Teachers three-two-six-seven since September eleventh, two thousand and one, and whereas Melinda has led members in our community to support the passage of Proposition twenty-five and Proposition thirty, and began a series of family and community workshops to support families and build local support for public education. And whereas Melinda most currently leads in supporting the establishment of community schools in Daly City, and is the recent recipient of the San Mateo Labor Council's Unity Award, now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of the Jefferson Elementary School District does hereby commend Melinda Dart for her dedication and support of public education. Thank you, Melinda.
So, so maybe the board should vote before.
We have to vote on it.
We have to vote to pass the resolution, so we should entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
You can stay up there, though.
Well, let me take us a moment.
I would like to make a motion that we approve resolution, we don't have a number on this. Oh, resolution commending Melinda Dart, as we just read it.
A second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Can we say a few words before you?
Of course.
I just wanna congratulate you, Melinda, and, um, I know that I visited your classrooms when you were at, at, um, Woodrow Wilson, and I was amazed how you guys taught in that very different format compared to some of the other classrooms, all together in little, um, clusters, and, uh, and watched you as you grew, so to speak. And I just wanna say you were a great president for the union. And not only that, but you went beyond just being a union member, or a, a union leader for your members, but you also reached out to the community, and that's why we are doing better with our schools and our communities, 'cause we're bringing everyone together, PTA, with the teachers, with the classified, and making it work with, for the children. And I wanna thank you for all the, I don't know how, how many hours you spend, but it must be endless. And so I was, when I went to that evening, when you were awarded the Unity Award, I was so proud, so proud, and all of us were, and we had, I think we outnumbered anybody as far as attendance, right? But we were so proud of you, because you represent what you've done for the district. So, and this isn't even enough words to say, thank you for everything that you do. And don't leave us! 'Cause I don't think we can do it without you. Okay.
I spoke already, so...
I, I, I wanna echo the same sentiment as, as, uh, Marie. I mean, good educators, um, are many times underappreciated, and, and I just wanna say, thank you, thank you, thank you, 'cause I, too, was very proud to be amongst the many in attendance that night celebrating you. I mean, there were many people from around the, the county there, but we were there honoring you in our district, and it was wonderful to be able to celebrate one of our own. And I just wanna thank you for your leadership, because it's your example that continues to empower others and engage them, not just in the classroom, but outside of the classroom. And that's, that's not something you just learn, that's something that comes from within, and you definitely got it. So thank you, thank you for everything that you do.
It's hard to add to all that. It's, you know, it has been a pleasure working with you and knowing you, and I'm, like, I agree with Ms. Brizuela, don't leave us. And I do want, I just wanna add my heartfelt thanks for all you do for our district and our students.
All right, thanks, come on up.
Now you can come up.
Now you can speak.
Thank you very much, um, I'm overwhelmed. It's, uh, very, very nice, uh, to have this commendation. And I do wanna say, though, that it, you know, it really isn't just me, it is, you know, all the teachers of our local that really have worked so hard to create these ties, and, uh, the PTA members who work with us, and the administration who works with us, and, and, uh, the, uh, board members and the community members, and, uh, together we have really begun to do some great things that can, um, really bring forth our dreams, I think, for the best of education to be happening in Daly City. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One last comment, um, you know, when I read, um, the day that you began your presidency with AFT, um, it's nice to know that something good happened on that day, when, when we can look back, and, and, and now I can think of something good that, that day, so, congratulations.
Item F, appointment of member to the Measure I Citizens Oversight Committee, parent member, and the administration recommends the appointment of Lilian Peña as a parent member to fill the vacancy on the committee. And I don't see that.
Um, she's not able to be here, um, and I think I mentioned, we had a forced retirement last June, um, with, when a parent of an eighth grader, um, served on the COC and can no longer serve as a parent member, so. And Ms. Peña is, uh, very willingly, um, stepped up to the plate and submitted her application, and I think she'll be a great addition.
No, she was one of our candidates, right?
She was.
And we were impressed with her background and her stuff, so I, I, I'm pleased that you were able, that she's willing to do it as a parent.
Yes.
So...
I would like to make the motion that we approve the appointment of Lilian Peña as parent member to the Measure I Citizens Oversight Committee.
I'll second the motion.
Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peña.
Thanks.
I think she'll do good.
Yes. Resolution number fifteen dash zero-nine dash zero-nine B, to deny authority for a gun shop to operate within close proximity to schools and residential communities. The board will consider adoption of this revolu-, resolution to deny authority for a gun shop to operate within close proximity to schools and within residential communities at seventy-three forty-five Mission Street, close to Market, decreasing the availability and access to firearms in our community. And I'll just add that the schools that are the closest are TRP, SBA, Thornton, Jefferson, uh, there's probably more.
Hillside is a private school.
Hillside, uh, you know, so, I mean, there's...
Holy Angels.
Holy Angels.
And there's, um, numerous residents, uh, in the area as well.
I just wanna clarify, it's not within our jurisdiction to grant or deny authority, but as a, the, the resolution suggests that we urge the Daly City City Council to deny.
All right, that's a good clarification. Any comments or deliberation before I call this?
To, to me, I have to say, it hardly needed any deliberation. I think the location of a gun shop there is really unacceptable in our community, and I certainly urge the city council to deny that application.
Well, I'd like just to say that I, I wasn't in favor of this either. Um, and if we look deeper into seeing other documents and other things, you'll find out that it's, it's not something that should be there. It's, um, there's must be a reason why South City won't let them have it, and why there aren't any other. Now, they said something about it, they talked about there's only one, there's no other shop like that, except to go to San Jose, but there is one.
That's not true, yeah.
Yeah, there is one, there is a closer. And so it's, you know, it, I, I, I guess I wanna say that I'm kinda tired of Daly City being the dumpy grounds. Like, we can always do anything there, 'cause we're not gonna care, or we're not gonna speak up. And I think this is, you know, you talk about parents coming, talk to us about things that they're not, maybe they're not happy with what's going on, or they wanna see something better going on. This is the same with something like this. For us to ignore it's happening would be, if we found out something happened to a child, we would feel very bad. There's been incidents in our schools, and they'll probably will be in the future anyway, but that's not make it easier, it's not, like, make it be a, a common thing. So I'm very happy this is here.
I, I think for me, I think my biggest concern was hearing that a, a lot of residents, um, were unaware.
Yeah.
Were uninformed that this was happening, and that, for me, is concerning in its own. And I think, um, that's, that's an important part of us being public servants, is serving those who are underserved and voiceless. And I think this is one of, one of the issues that, um, we can do that, for those who are unaware, that this is something people are trying to introduce into our, our community. And I, too, support the denial of this. I do understand that we don't have the authority, that it goes to the city council, but I think it's important that we do our, our job to urge them to do so, and to keep this out of our community.
You know, one of the reasons it's, it's not transparent is because they only legally by law have to send out a notice within three hundred feet. So who gets it? Another business that is either closed, or they don't live here anyway. So really, in reality, a lot of these things go past the radar, because no one knows about it. So I wish somehow that could be changed. I think if something like this comes to a city, everybody should know about it, so they can at least have something to say about it. And we have children that walk by there all the time, so...
Yeah, I agree that, you know, we should urge the city to attract other types of businesses in that area. I lived right down the street from there. And, uh, and also I wanted to thank Ms. Pamela D. Giovanni for bringing this to our attention. And if there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and bring her up now.
Good evening, board members and president, members of the audience. First, I'd like to commend, Melinda Dart was a big help in this, and the superintendent, Bernie Vidalis, also, and board members. For, um, I'm a member of the community, and I'm here, and you have always been welcoming. I do see a difference already in the reach out in our community, in the positive things that are happening. And as you said, having a, a gun, as they say in the city council, as he presented himself, the applicant, gun repair and sales shop at seventy-three forty-five Mission Street is not the direction we want to go. And, um, so what I would like to say is, for clarification purposes, and for members of our audience, is that responsible gunshot, gun ownership is one thing, and we have transporting goods, and we have Big Five, for those that choose that for themselves. But having this in our residential and among some of the schools is unacceptable of this location, given the fact that currently the proposed applicant is operating in the back of South City Pawn Shop upon looking at the address of three-three-seven Grand Avenue. Though also the proposed applicant, uh, according to the Secretary of State, has not been a limited liability corporation until April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. So there is not much of a background in this type of facility, and to give it, put something like this accessible in our community. And as you can see, he says repair, but upon viewing the applicant's online, it's also modification of assault rifles and upgrading things such as called plain Janes. That may be legal, but we have not had the opportunity, and these do not belong on our streets. We have students that come from war-torn countries and that, in our community, and if, they suffer from PTSD, and also are veterans. And by being in that hallway, across from the cleaners on that corner, if I was to see something of this magnitude walking down the street, because there is no parking, where are they gonna park at? And say, for instance, this guy is legal, but he's standing there waiting to be buzzed in by the, uh, proposed applicant on the other side. There's gonna be something that's gonna happen, it's just a matter of time. So I'm glad that some of us have learned in Daly City, and I am proud to be here at this school board meeting of Sandy Hook. And since Sandy Hook, there's been over one hundred and forty school shootings across the nation. When are we gonna learn? When are we gonna protect our children? Well, we in Daly City say, now, we're gonna protect our children now, we're gonna protect our community now. And I am proud to be here amongst you, and I'm just a small person on the streets trying to protect my community with all of you supporting us. And I will do what I can, as you know, and this is very personal. And I dedicate tonight to Joseph Waters and to Shaquille Ali, who know all too personal what gun violence does to a person for the rest of their lives, and the loss of their children, and what they suffer with, and what they carry with for the rest of their lives. So I urge you to vote for this, and we hope to see you Monday night, 'cause as you know, I will be there. I encourage, uh, parents to come, and because we must, we know what we do, and once, when you know something, you have to take an action. And I say, take an action now, and we can prevent our community. And guns do travel, they know no borders. So I will tell you that I had a gun pulled to me in two thousand and thirteen by Burlington Coat Factory. So this has gotta stop, and my friend was killed, uh, when I was fifteen, with fifty-two rounds. So I say I thank you, I thank all of you, and Melinda Dart, the teachers, the board members, Superintendent Vidalis, administration, everyone in my community that actually is helping me tonight, trying to get the word out. So I encourage you, and I, I respect you, and I'm so proud to be here, and I thank you. Let's save lives together. Thank you.
Thanks. Melinda Dart, AFT.
Thank you, Melinda Dart, AFT thirty-two-six-seven. I wanna commend the board for, um, for writing this resolution and talking about it this evening, uh, against having a gun shop in close proximity to many schools in the Mission Street corridor. I don't believe that more access to guns in our community will help anybody. It certainly won't help our students or improve their family lives, or serve the needs they have for more affordable housing or more services in their community. I also believe that, um, a shop like this would automatically create more law enforcement activity in the area, that it would just have to increase. Um, and since San Mateo County has committed to prosecute to the fullest any irregularities in gun possession, um, we know that there would be more, uh, more stops, right? And we know by viewing the statistics that this would translate into more stopping and questioning of non-white youth. So instead of providing less impediments and more opportunities for our youth, this action would simply serve to reinforce what we call the school-to-prison pipeline. So I thank you for your, uh, your, uh, stand against this considered action. And I do urge everyone to come to the council meeting on Monday night. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
No, no more cards?
In that case, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution fifteen dash zero-nine dash zero-nine B, to deny authority for a gun shop to operate within close proximity to schools and residential communities.
Second, then, did you say? Go ahead.
I think we got a second and a third.
All right, roll call.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Ms. Lia Inga Anawahi?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye. Pass.
I hope our city council hears that message loud and clear.
Um, I will make sure that, um, the copy of the signed resolution gets forwarded to city council members. If there is a board member that would like to deliver it on Monday, please let me know, and I can give it to you, so you can personally deliver it.
All right.
Oh.
I guess we'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, somebody, whoever's going.
I'm going, for sure. But if you go, you can do it.
I'm not sure yet.
Okay, okay.
Hopefully I'll be there.
Love you too, Shaw. I love you too.
All right. So we have, uh, acceptance of donation, right? Or did I skip?
No, that's up next.
The administration recommends acknowledgement and approval of the donation of six hundred children's, children books, and two hundred adult books from Ms. Karen Wiggins Dowler, adjunct faculty of Early Childhood Education Department of Skyline College, for students and families which were used at family ed night at Westlake School.
I just want to say, what a wonderful donation to make. And I will make the motion that we accept the donation with appropriate thanks. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. And we sent a very nice letter, to thank her too.
Item D, fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, unaudited actuels. The administration recommends approval.
Fourteen, the fourteen, fifteen years finally ended for us in the business department. And so I'm here tonight to bring you the financial, the statements which you have, the unaudited actuels for the year. And so what they are, the unaudited actuels for the fourteen, fifteen year reflect the transactions of the school district from July first, two thousand fourteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Boards, and that's what we just closed, boards are required to approve the unaudited actuels by September fifteenth of two thousand fifteen. External auditors will come in, and they'll audit our, our unaudited actuels, and they'll give an opinion on them. After that, those financials, once they've been audited, they'll be sent to the state, and they're required to be at the state by December fifteenth. And then our partner from our audit firm will come and to the board, and present those audited actuels to board, either in December or January coming up. And then the board is required to approve those audited actuels.
Is there anything that happens in between the state receiving the audited report? And then, does it go back to the auditors before you bring it back to us?
Well, the state will approve it if there are findings, then the state will contact us and the auditors as well to ask us what our remedy, in the financials, there'll be remedies for any kind of audit, findings that we have. And if the state needs further clarification, or wants us to do something more, then they'll communicate with us what needs to be done. And then we'll have to follow that. So, they will be, they will communicate that.
And just for clarity, the unaudited, unaudited actuels is our staff's report to say at the end of June thirtieth, here's what we believe our balances are. Auditors come in later this fall, and they audit these balances and make sure that it is truly correct. And then you will, you will receive a report from the auditor in January on the audited actuels for the previous year, and any findings that they may have discovered.
Alright, the state does get involved before we give our final?
Only, the state gets only involved when there's irregularities or findings. And in the past, we haven't had major ones, so.
And usually the auditors find something too, if they, I mean, we'll find it first.
Couple of times, something real minor, alright, thanks, sorry.
Okay. So, our, our unaudited actuels are all of our financials. They're made up of many different funds. As you can see, they're all separated out and for many different purposes. And the ones that are, the auditors will audit all of them. But the, of course, the ones that we're, we operate the district on are, is Fund One. And that's the general fund, and the general fund is broken out into unrestricted and restricted. They're not actually two different funds, they're just separated out between that. So, at the beginning of the school year, these were our, our fund balances. And then we have all of our revenues, all of our expenditures, and what our end fund balance will be in every fund. Again, these two would be combined. Since the second interim, these were the projected year-end balances. And so these are the differences between this and here. And every year, we have these differences. I'll be explaining what these differences here in the general fund are made up from in some further slides. And one of the things I wanted to just point out again, is that there are a couple of ways of doing a budget. One way is to do a budget for exactly what you think is going to be spent. And then there's a budget that you do to authorize expenditures, in which case you hope that you've overauthorized, and that there are funds left over. And so, we always hope for that on a yearly basis. And at the end of the year, those show up, and many are carryovers for school sites and projects and things. So, I will go through that with you. So, here, we're, we've gone down to the general fund, again, unrestricted and restricted combined. This portion here is the unrestricted. And the total, again, this would match to the previous page, the nine point nine million end fund balance. It's broken out into different purposes. We have a five percent reserve for economic uncertainty, we have prepaid and revolving cash, some designations. I will show you these designations in a further slide. And then the unappropriated, so this is like the unrestricted unrestricted money. And then we have the restricted fund balance. And this amount here, I will also go over with you in a further slide, what that's made up of. So, the two combined, we have eleven point six million dollars in the general fund. This is just a visual of the other page, again, the unappropriated amount, the restricted fund balance, other designations, the revolving cash, which is a very small amount, and, and prepaid, and then the reserve for economic uncertainty, which is at five percent in this presentation. So, again, for the unrestricted portion of the general fund, our revenues came in, since, since the second interim report, our revenues came in two hundred thousand dollars above what was projected. Our expenditures, two million below. And our contributions to restricted programs came in one point four million below. So, since the second interim, we have a three point seven million dollar better end balance. And this is something that we, again, that's a yearly thing. Each of these sections, I will go over in more detail of what they're all made up of. And I'll start with the revenue section. So, the revenue section, the two hundred and five thousand dollars extra that we have is made up of revenue limit, which has actually this little decrease, but in reality, there is an increase in the revenue limit. And that is because the, there was additional gap funding, it went up by one point one percent. It went from twenty-nine point one-five percent to thirty point one-six percent. So, it was one, one point one percent more of the gap funding that we had, so we're that much closer to the target. This negates it, this takes that same amount away, basically. This is about two hundred thousand dollars plus, about two hundred thousand dollars minus. But there's, the reason for this, and you'll see it in another slide, is that we contribute to the deferred maintenance program. And normally, it's, was budgeted as a transfer of funds, as an expenditure to the general fund, where we're transferring it to Fund Fourteen. And instead of transferring the funds that way, a new ways of doing it is we reduce the funding that we have in the general fund instead. So, that exact amount, instead of being taken out of expenditures, charged expenditures, it's just taken out of the revenues, the revenues themselves are transferred. So, it's a wash. And then, from the state revenues, we have a little bit more in lottery and other revenues, not, not a whole lot. And then we have local revenues, so we have an increased amount of interest. And we have gains and investments, donations came in at the, since the second interim as well. And then we have PG&E rebates, and this, every year, we get this like little adjustment for workers' comp. So, we have a hundred and ninety-three thousand of local funds as well. So, this is what's made up of the, the increase in revenues. The decrease in expenditures, more complex. We, there was one librarian position that was never filled in the year, we kept that position open. I'm hoping to fill it, and those funds didn't get spent, so that's part of it. And then, also in our budgeting, you know, we budget for per diems and for stipends. And those came in a little bit lower, and so we have unspent funds. There was a little bit higher spend, spending in funds for the classified, we had more subs in the classified, and we also have the, the technology support that was added to, to the staff. And so, it came in a little bit higher than second interim. The benefits, they just reflect that, and I know that, that looks large, but that's mostly because of retiree benefits not coming in as high as we would, we expect, we budget as though everything is going to come in, and it doesn't, doesn't always do that. The actuary also, you know, indicates what, how much is expected to be expended in the year. And then, also, social security and workers' compensation came in lower than expected. As for the supplies, both actually the supplies and the services, the majority of the amount are carry, site carryovers of discretionary money, S and C grants, so supplemental and concentration grant funds, and donations that are in both of them that weren't spent, and will be carried over to the school sites in the following year. Additionally, we had some furnishings that, for TRP, that were budgeted for two thousand fifteen. Those funds will be spent in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, instead of fifteen, sixteen. And then, down in the services, as well as the carryover for the school site, the document scanning that was approved in the, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, wasn't all completed. They, there's, it's a long process, we're still not complete, and so that is also included. That will be carried over and budgeted for the fifteen, sixteen year, sixteen, fifteen, sixteen year. And then, the transfers out, the, when I talked about the revenues, going over to the, some of the revenues, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that was going to support deferred maintenance coming out of the revenues. This is where it is budgeted to come out. And so, this is two hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand of this is because it came out of the revenues instead of being an expenditure. And then, reduced indirect cost, right? So, that's how we make up the expenditures, that the reduction in expenditures from, since the second interim. And again, all of the authorized expenditures that aren't spent, this is where they get flushed out and back into the fund balance. And our school sites will be getting their carryover, as they do every year. Actually, as soon as the, the county locks in our budget, and also after this is approved. The next part is our contributions to restricted programs. So, the contributions to special ed also came in lower. The, the items, one point one million, that make that up are salaries and benefits for the employees that are charged to special ed. And services, and the cost of county classes, year after year, it, it's coming in lower than what they say it's going to come in. And one year, quite some time ago, before I was here, the county told everybody what they thought their expenditures would be for the county classes, and they underestimated by a large amount. And districts were very upset when the costs came in much higher. And so, now they have taken on a practice to have it higher, but they're, they try to put a cap on it. So, county classes, the high cost pool, we get money back for, if, if a student costs us more than a certain dollar amount, I believe it's seventy-three thousand dollars, then there's this high cost pool where all the districts put the funds in together, and at the end of the year, districts who have really high-cost students will be refunded some of the, some of their expenditures. And so, that comes in. And also, the, for mental health, actually, the mental health is going to be down in this section down here. But anyway, so that's that special ed, and then other restricted programs. The mental health for the county office of ed, we received two hundred and, two hundred and eighty-one, no. We, we received one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars reimbursement for things that the county paid for our mental health. And we don't budget that, and so whatever we get ends up going in to our fund balance at the end of the year. Also, Common Core and Title One came in at a lower expense. All in all, we had lessened contributions by one point four million dollars to the restricted programs. So, our locally restricted programs are, are end fund balance for our locally restricted programs. I, I showed you on one of those front pages, I said I would explain what these other designations are. We had site donations, so the school site donations, a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. A lot of it that was received in the, since the second interim, which will be carried over to next year, and that's part of what the school sites will get in their carryover. And then, these other programs here, a lot of, again, the supplemental and concentration grant funds, those are earmarked to go to the school sites for next year. So, they are locally restricted by, by us, because we're carrying it forward so that they can continue their programs, and then site discretionary funds. So, the, this is like a locally restricted end balance. Then we have, the non-locally restricted end balances. So, we have the routine maintenance and repair, which we're required to, because we receive state funds, we're required to contribute three percent per year to, to that, so that we can maintain the facilities that we built with the state funds. And so, we have to do that, and we have six hundred thousand in there. And then, the instructional materials, as we try to, we, we want to continue to be able to have all the instructional materials that we want. So, until we need them for specific purposes, we have eight hundred sixty-five thousand there. The clean jobs, that is Prop thirty-nine, and these are funds that we received to try to get a plan to show how we could save monies. And it's something that we have not been able to show, that we can save monies, that we need to prove through energy efficiency. Because we had done the solar project before these funds became available. And that is where we would have been able to show the energy efficiency. So, we're finding ourselves that we are likely, one day, we'll probably have to return those funds to the state, but we will wait until we are invoiced from the state to return them. Medical billing, and then a small amount. So, we have, that's on that, one of those front pages as well, the restricted balances here of one point six million dollars. Then we have categorical grant funds, these are also restricted funds, but you're not going to find them in there, because they do not go into the end fund balance. Categorical programs, we only recognize the revenues when we have the expenditures. So, if we don't have the expenditures, we can't recognize the revenues. So, they go into a deferred revenue. But, these are still funds that we have, that we, that when we spend the money next year, we'll recognize the revenues. So, it's just the way it works, it's the way we have to do it.
Probably really don't have this, maybe.
And so, we have three hundred and forty-one thousand, and most of it in Title One, that we will carry over into next year, and, and will be part of our programs. And that's it, any questions?
Thanks, I don't have any questions.
Pretty standard.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kessler.
So, do we have a motion to approve the unaudited actuels?
I so move.
I'll second the motion.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Administrative appointment, the administration recommends approval of the following appointment. William West, Vice Principal of Fernando Rivera School- William West, Vice Principal of Fernando Rivera School, effective Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, two hundred and eight workdays.
I, I know, but what is am?
That's just a payroll code there. We can maybe eliminate that in future agendas. We don't know how to read that.
I, I just, yeah. I never saw that before.
Step two, a hundred and two thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars prorated to start date. And I don't see.
He's not able to be here tonight, so.
Congratulations to Mr. West. I enjoyed working with him at Ben Franklin and coached basketball together there. That was real fun.
Oh, good. I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of William West as Vice Principal of Fernando Rivera School, effective September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, for two hundred and eight workdays, step two, a hundred and two thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars prorated to the start date.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Joke.
Really?
Down to the end.
Board member comments and reports and reflection on board meeting guidelines, starting from Ms. Douglas.
Well, I don't have any further comments or reports. I was thinking about our guidelines at the start of the meeting with the one about staying focused on the goals and avoiding being sidetracked. And I think we did a great job and I think this meeting really focused a lot on what was there for our students and what's needed for our students.
That's right.
We did a good work.
Right.
I too don't have anything further to report, but I, I thought today, today's meeting evolved, especially one of the issues surrounding the gun shop, is we will work toward the future, learning from the past. Thank you. Thank you for that initiative.
Yes.
You picked the same one that I picked. And I was going to say yes. And, and I also want to say I'm very proud of what we're doing for the community, for the children. So, it, you know, we could easily take the easy way out, but we did the right thing.
That's true.
So.
Alright, and I don't have the exact details now, but there will be another teacher summit at San Francisco State and it's called Teachers Make It Happen. So, I'm looking forward to that. I know right now it's October third, Saturday. So, it's most likely like nine to three or something like that, but I'll, I'll give more information as I receive it. And I focused on, actually the first one, we will respect differences, we will show respect and never dismiss or devalue others. And we didn't have any problems with that this evening. Yes.
Okay.
So, no persons are wishing to address the board on closed session items. At this time, we will take a short recess in memory of Robert Samarano. And then we will, to close session.
Yeah, Mr. Samarano is the husband, was the husband of former Jefferson Council PTA, co-president, co-president for many years. He was very involved in our schools, even though his wife was the one that was on all, you know, on, on all the ballots and being elected. But he, he was always around even, and, you know, at the end, so. I just want to close our meeting in his memory.
Thanks.